Eric.
Again.
Eric.
Bye.
Eric.
Foreman.
Eric.
Phil Piper.
Eric.
Boyer.
Eric Gray.
Eric.
Okay, number two approval agenda. Any changes here on it? Uh, no changes this evening. Move to approve. All roll.
Again.
Yes.
Bye.
Yes.
Foreman.
K S.
Phil Piper.
Yeah.
Boyer.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Okay, number three presentation petition does communication today. Fairway presents donation for all of us.
So over the last fifteen years in particular, Fairway has grown at a pretty decent clip. It's important that the public infrastructure surrounding our 1.3 million square feet industrial park continues to support our growth. And this is our thank you to the city of Boone for their contribution and helping ensure that the public infrastructure continues to grow. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next up we have a presentation by one area community college president, Rob Dennis.
All right. Thank you very much, Rob Dennis, President of DMAC. We figured that at least every twenty years that we should give you a state of the college to the communities that support many of our campus center. And since I'm in my nineties here, I'm running out of time. So, this is it. And I don't know if I'll be here for the next twenty. It's been very, very proud to have one of our campus facilities here in Boone. It's our fifty-sixth year as a college with DMAC. Young and higher education first. We serve six thousand five hundred fifty square miles throughout it, which I call the economic sweet spot of Iowa. And we have a number of campuses that are fully accredited as well as a number of centers. We want to make sure that we were within driving distance of every citizen within our service area. We are the largest community college by far and always taps in. That should be because of the economic spot that we're in and the population we have central Iowa. But we work very hard to make sure that we provide for all the students, families, businesses in our area. We serve about thirty-six thousand credit students every year, twenty-two thousand non-credit students. We have students from every county of the state of Iowa. Ninety-seven percent of our students come from Iowa, ninety-five percent of our students stay in Iowa after they graduate. It's a tremendous return on investment of Iowa, by the citizens of Iowa. Career advantage in our current home program, we offer college credit classes to about fifteen thousand high school students a year throughout our district. Even students that are ready for college level work. It's free to them. The state is very progressive for providing additional support for the K-12 partner with us to deliver college credit classes. We dropped a little bit of a depth pandemic related in twenty-one, but this fall we look like we're heading back very strong. We look at market penetration, it's a percentage of fifteen to fifty-four-year-olds that are coming to DMAC. That was our market penetration. And more red means more market penetration. So this is twenty-ten, this is twenty-nineteen. Clearly, more and more individuals are realizing that no matter where they're heading, whether they're going to the workforce or they're going to the premier university, the best place to start is at DMAC. Our quality is second to none and our price is unbelievably good. And I talked about our numbers, fifty-five percent of our students are female, we're twenty-three percent minority, almost eighty percent are student transfer students that are here for the first year to a four-year degree. We send students to Harvard, Cornell, Yale, and all the major institutions in the state. Students start with us, they go on to be current students. We have over two-hundred-and-twenty-six certificates of one of the degrees. Anything that a business needs or is a major that a four-year institution needs or wants to deliver, as long as we have this efficient number of students, we open a program. We run like a business. I mean, we've opened, we opened our mortuary science program unless three weeks, and one of the more potential posts of eating one. We move fast just like any business would do. We look at our top six majors, mentioned liberal arts, our transfer students, the large health science, triple justice, manufacturing, computer IT, and then business. Everybody loves our students, but the only community college in the world that Cornell articulates with, we're very proud of that. All three regions universities, all the private colleges, and we just articulated with Tuskegee University, we're the only community college in the Midwest that Tuskegee articulates too. And with the history of North Washington, Harvard being in this area, we're very, very proud of that. We're in the middle of our first comprehensive strategic plan. We've always had a strategic plan, but we're really, we're working hard on this one to concentrate on our stakeholders, our people, our internal process, and our stewardship. And our mission is to serve the students, the families, and the business, the community throughout our district. And our higher level initiatives this year are diversity, equity, inclusion. Iowa's becoming much more diverse. We need to make sure that everyone who is willing and able to work can work. We want to give them the skills that our company continues to be successful. And the second is guided pathways. Guided pathways is a national movement now to help students decide what they want to do, get on a path to get the degree, stay on the path, and then learn a lot so that we know that there's a value. And again, we're trying to reduce the amount of time students spend not knowing what to do. We want to help them make decisions and then move forward. And then the diversity, as I mentioned earlier, we need to be inclusive. We've got many more diverse individuals who are swarming in Iowa, so we're very excited to get them into the workforce. A few of our successes, our Department of Education created College and Career Transition Council. We've got a great cadre of K-12s, councilors, they have about twice the caseloads that councilors should have, and they spend a lot of time on mental health, discipline, registration, et cetera. But the Department of Ed wants to provide more support to juniors and seniors to help decide where they're going to go to college and then what they're going to do. DMAC got funding for one, we hired ten, partnering with eighteen, eighteen different schools throughout our district. We also just received a two-million-dollar earmark, Indian Hills and Congress Room in Dover Meeks, add more. And you're going to get a reward for this fall as to what the first year of work of these transition councilors could do. Helping students get on a path and then moving forward. Dennis and Susan Alba, one of the, one of the billionaires in Iowa, joined the degree after high school from DMAC. This, today even, is a million-dollar grant to this white student to expand our culinary art program. We've got a nationally-known culinary program, actually internationally active. We've had French chefs come here from France for thirty-seven years in our homes, and students from France, it made us work in French restaurants. If you go into any restaurant in central Iowa, always have the DMAC chef. Get dinner there is, no, you should see. Carl, Matt and Moira, he was a million, Carl is Carl Sherwood. They gave us the million-dollar lead gift to expand our auto tech facility. You know, auto techs are unbelievable, man. We were able to double the amount of space we had, double the number of techs we could put out. This is the first class of three-hundred-and-nine high school students all over the state coming in for the only state's skill competition statewide, and they, they're just blown away by this facility. Our urban campus in downtown Des Moines is the first of the northern students in Color College in the state of Iowa. We just finished a twenty-five-million-dollar addition there. It used to be ugly block buildings and parking lots. Now we've got a beautiful education center to the right of the DMAC letter. To the left, we've got a conference center, student center, and actually some green space. I'm excited about it. It's just a beautiful way, about five thousand students a year are served there, and you and I partnered with us there. We call you and I at DMAC. For low-income students, they will act, you and I will actually buy down tuition so you can get a two, a four-year degree from you and I at DMAC tuition. So it is a heck of a deal and a major commitment by you and I. Our Boone campus, we're extremely excited, and I'm seeing a trend here with Fairway investing in this community. They were the lead gift on our new wellness facility. We've got Drew Nelson here, who's the provost of the Boone campus. We're very excited about that. As you know, Frank Reiner is a board member from Boone. And then, of course, Doc Rouse was here when I came here nineteen years ago, was a great individual. But this is a phenomenal facility, and Drew will tell me that because we built a new facility, and BJ will say the same thing, finally, the men's basketball team won the national basketball championship last year. And look at BJ's ring, it's heavy and it's beautiful. But we have probably the most successful athletic programs in the state. And our students graduate and do well academically when they move on, as well as they're great athletes. They came in third in the nation this year, and as many of you may know, our Boone softball team was phenomenal all year, came in fifth in the nation at the national tournament. So we've got a great program here. And our Carroll program, we're finishing a welding addition and a classroom and conference space. In the lower left is Jim Knott, who was the provost of our Carroll campus and is now the, on our board from up there. We had a great opening ceremony, maybe one of the rooms after Hawaii. Maytag, when they left, they were bought by Whirlpool and left Newton, they gave us all the Maytag corporate office buildings in downtown. We partnered with the city of Newton to redevelop that entire area into a restaurant, a, some market-grade housing, hotel, as well as some other beautiful space. So it will really help, and this is what we like to do in community. We're a partner, and the city of Newton has been a great partner with us there. All politics aside, aside, we try to get every politician we can on, on one of our campuses, because they say they know what community colleges are, but they don't know DMAC. So we've had, we had the Bidens and Kamala, Vice President Kamala Harris there. We've given medallions to President Obama, President Trump, now gave one to Jill Biden here for Joe. They, they need to know what kind of work we do. These medallions were made by our tool and die students. Department of Homeland Security, those very friendly people at Des Moines Airport. TSA came to us in two thousand and eleven, wanted us to create a homeland security certificate for the screeners in Des Moines Airport. We did, we put it online in twenty-fourteen, twenty-seventeen, the head of TSA flies in, summons us to the airport, tells us, tells us there are eighty colleges and universities all over the country doing TSA homeland security training for their airports, but they were so happy with the DMAC, of whom they terminated seventy-eight of them, gave us thirty-six states, seventy-five percent of the country, two-hundred-and-twenty-two airports, twenty-two thousand agents to train. So we went from one state to thirty-six states, which was a big deal until twenty-nineteen when they fired the other one. We've now got all fifty states, one-hundred-and-forty airports, forty-three thousand agents we turn for training. This last May, we had a DMAC graduate from every state in the union, many of them being TSA employees. One drove in from Baltimore, Maryland, the other one drove in from Austin, Texas, to be a graduate. So this is a big deal for them to get their advanced degree. We have the Iowa Cyber Hub, cyber, cybersecurity is a big deal. We partnered with Iowa State to create a two-plus-two, two years at DMAC, two years anywhere else in cybersecurity, really helping them work with companies. The National Center for Academic Excellence chose DMAC as a national, the National Security Administration chose DMAC as a National Center for Academic Excellence in Cyber Defense. We got a brief flat here, and I don't know whether that was a free record for getting the award, but we got it. We're the only center of excellence in the state of Iowa in cybersecurity. We lead senior colleagues throughout central Iowa. Golden Sachs picked us, picked us as the first statewide, Golden Sachs Ten Thousand Small Business Program. It's a mini MBA for small businesses. We've now had a hundred and eighty-four companies go through, and we're just finishing our seventh cohort. This is to help small companies throughout the entire state of Iowa become more successful. Kosovo is a sister state to Iowa. We partnered with the consulate in downtown Des Moines. If you go to Kosovo, the whole American country in the world, just walking down the main street is the capital, you see Iowa flags everywhere, and the Iowa National Guard was instrumental in helping them get their freedom, and we're in attendance seventeen years ago. So we're very proud of that relationship. It is a beautiful country that should be on your list. We did get a million-dollar grant to, to train twenty-eight women in energy. These are Kosovo honor women who came here for two years, all expenses paid, the manufacturing, wind, solar, computers. So now they're all back in Kosovo. They graduate with a three-point-eight EPA average. Ben American, this is Catherine Cooner, one of the vice presidents, and this was the day they gave us a fuse they sell as a part of our own energy program. You saw the person that was in the background, we've now got some solar energy there. Again, the solar and alternative energies are the way of the future. Downtown by our urban campus, we've got the Young and Middle Data Center for Working Families, which helps individuals, they may not go to college, but helps them get a job. We serve about five thousand individuals there, they need clothes, they need resume, resume help. One of our graduates, Joe Wells, just put them a mural on the north side of the building, which is just absolutely stunning. The legislature of Iowa has been unbelievably supporting to us. They give us money in various buckets to go to accomplish goals that they've got, and one of them is to create more short-term training programs. With their, with their support, we've created all these short-term programs, non-credit, helping individuals that don't have a year or two get into jobs in just a few months. The governor has a future in Iowa, you've heard a lot about that. One part of that is Last Dollar Scholarship, where the state will actually pay the tuition before a student has to pay out a loan in over fifty-eight different career areas. In the last two years, two-thousand-eight-hundred-and-eighty-six DMAC students have drawn out over seven-point-two million dollars, helped them get their education in the tight-demand career areas. I mentioned Dennis Alba earlier, he hosts a golf tournament for DMAC at his golf course. Last year, we netted in a one-day golf tournament, four-hundred-and-seven-thousand dollars, our record was twenty-nineteen, four-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand. Every dollar you give DMAC foundation to students. We take none off the top for administration. We're piloting by the National Science Administration to learn more about STEM education. They're very impressed with what our grants department, our faculty has done in science, technology, engineering, and math. They're one of the thirteen colleges throughout the country. Illumina Foundation and New America picked the DMAC as one of six community colleges in the country to showcase our workforce delivery program. We're very excited about working with these six of those highly recognized individuals. And again, we're one of six in the country. Amazon picked us as their first education partner in the state of Iowa. Amazon provides free college education to their associates, so they picked us as their first education partner. And the governor gave us a million dollars last December to open up a new vocational center in Templeton, Iowa, partnering with four different schools, focusing on career technical education. And Google picked us, one of two community colleges in the entire United States, showcasing pilot their software engineering certificate. It's a big deal because the students get to take the certificate for free, plus Google gives them five thousand bucks a piece to do it. And now we're working on Tesla to become one of their training sites. Twenty-sixteen, DMAC has picked number ten, I don't mean number ten of the fifteen community colleges in Iowa, based on value. We were picked number ten of the one-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy, seven-hundred-and-seventy-two year programs in the entire United States, based on value. We have the highest bond rating of any community college in Iowa, the lowest property tax levying of any community college in Iowa, and the lowest tuition fees of any college and university. So we, as I said, we run like a business, and money's important to our students, every dollar is important to them. And in December, Forbes Magazine picked DMAC as the number-one employer in the state of Iowa, the first community college in the country, as well, the first college or university in the country to ever be number-one in their state. Principal was number four, John Nero was number five, state of Iowa was number six, Iowa State was number nine, University of Iowa was number three, it's a big number. We're very, very proud of this because, again, we are a strong employer and we need to be helpful. Again, our brand is life calling, our flag is freedom, doable. You can do it at DMAC for marketing profits, to be to put it up on a website or on a billboard. I said, what I really can say is life calling into your car and phone, because right now is the best time. If you know anybody that needs to improve their lives or careers, whatever, I can't guarantee you it's free, but very likely it is, and it's in fifty in the high-demand area, you not have to pick out a loan, get your tuition paid at the United States, and run these community colleges in the state. So thank you very much, and I'll see you in twenty years.
I just want to say, very impressive. We're very fortunate to have a community.
We're, we're very proud of Boone, and of campus. Of course, all of our advocacy programs are here, and again, you can't be more proud. We're proud of all of our students, with BJ and Drew, we make sure that our athletes are successful, not only on the court, but in the playoffs. We're very proud.
Just the scope of all things you've got going on, it's really impressive.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next, presentation on the proposed community wellness center. Thanks, Mayor and Council, if you remember, a couple months back, I talked to you about asking AZDC to put together a portal for the city to give you presentations on another tap for, for a wellness center. So tonight is that presentation. I will note that this is a presentation for the elected officials. When I complete my presentation, I'll answer any questions you have, and then if the mayor or comments out of the crowd. So as we move forward, I'm going to talk about three things tonight. One, the importance of a wellness center, the city will, and we had not intend that. The second point is the possible funding, how will we get this completed? The third would be proposed phases on this project, what the whole project looks like besides just a wellness center. So a wellness center, as I look at it, is not a place you need to go off on trackers. It's an economic development tool for the community, to grow this community, to entice people to move in this community, and as part of the quality of life project. So as we move forward on this, some of the important things to note for the wellness center, the city of Boone, is assist with the attraction retention of residents and businesses to the community. One of the things I want to note on that is, as you remember, the change that the Templeton AZDC and city just submitted an application for the Main Street Island program. I will note to the council that that was unanimous decision by council to commit three years in a total of ninety thousand dollars for that, if the application is accepted by the state. I think we had another month or two to think before we know on that. So the Main Street Island program, as I say, is part of this wellness center as well, as we know, we're talking about a downtown location at six-twenty-eighth St. Louis Street, to enhance the downtown, to improve it, to grow it, and to improve it with the Main Street Island program on investments in buildings by land. So that's a very important part of this as well. I think the wellness center in the downtown area is a catalytic effect on growth in our downtown in conjunction with the Main Street program. Now mind you, we think, we think the application should be improved, we'll know in a while, but again, if it's not the first time, we're going back. So it's not a matter of events, it's a matter of work. Okay? So it also, the wellness center enhances the recreational program in the entire city, and it's a great tool for healthcare as well, to ensure our citizens are healthy if they utilize the wellness center. That's very important in the city to make those opportunities available to our citizens so that they have those opportunities to improve their health. If you note in the latest census, which I will tell you, I don't necessarily agree with, that our population declined, the goal obviously is to reverse this trend and bring people to this community so that we can grow. Now, I would say, as we report on this, that involves a number of things. It involves housing, it involves jobs, it involves good schools, health safety, quality of life, which the wellness center and the recreation program, so it all falls in line with what we need to do to improve this community and global. And I'm sitting here with the assumption that the elected officials want to grow this community, so that's why we bring, we bring this forward. I think another one is, well, actually, I'm going to refer to the handout now for some additional benefits on page two. You all have that in front of you, correct? And some benefits will be centralized on page I, I hope you see that, see that. And I just want to make a note of Debbie Durham, the executive director, Donald Nordeil, according to her comments, she has on the importance of this project. And I'm just going to wait about twenty seconds, just to get that before. Okay, the second thing I want to talk about then is the possible funding. How can we fund a wellness center? As you all know, we had voted, and it did not pass, the result of that vote, ten percent of the residents of Boone voted in that, ten percent. So as we move forward, we want to talk about how we fund this, obviously, at least for that sake of the population vote, the franchise fee is not bothering us, and it is what it is. So we looked at ways that we can, we can fund this. If you remember a while back, Fairway, you committed their dedication to this wellness center and kept committing dollars, even after they felt it's important that we move forward on this. We talked about ARPA money. So we, we can, it's, we are comfortable, staff is saying, we're comfortable, dedicated six-hundred-thousand dollars of the ARPA money for this project. I will tell you that we spent about one point, or the amount was about one-point-eight-four-five million dollars. We had used on six projects for a total of just over one-point-two million, so you already spent two-thirds of that money on infrastructure projects. And then as, as we look at, look at our finances, I'm very, I spent a lot of time on this, we are comfortable coming forward that we could use, come up with another one-point-one million dollars. Where we come up with that, we could use four-hundred-thousand dollars out of reserves on the general fund, we could use four-hundred-thousand dollars out of reserves out of the global offset sales tax. And then if you remember a while back for COVID, we received two-hundred-and-seventy-six-thousand, just, just under three-hundred-thousand dollars in COVID relief money from the state. It's cares money, cares, wellness, all, I believe, I'm assuming that it goes together. So you could use that as well. So, so we actually have on hand, also chooses about one-point-seven million cash on hand for this project. And what I was putting is the one-point-one million for the reserves and the cares money and the six-hundred-thousand for the ARPA. So we are figuring that we will need to account for about eight million dollars. The city would, now mind you, some of the money that we do fundraise maybe in yearly, so it's not upfront, so you still may need bond for it, so you can do it, but we've put it in number at eight million dollars. What we will ask is that the city approve bonding up to ten million dollars. There's a name there, bond for ten million dollars, up to ten million dollars. And so with that amount, payment on that, we're comfortable, don't get checks, private fundraising, loss revenue, loss repeating, global offset sales tax revenue each year, debt service, can't give you an amount, I don't know most of you not, because we don't know how much it is, we don't know what their private fundraising is, but those are options that we're comfortable working for, telling you what you can, to make that bond payment, plus private fundraising. We've added enough, or not added, we put in there seven-hundred-thousand dollars for partnership contribution with operations. I will tell you that we've had really good conversations with the hospital, we've had conversations with care and book supervisors, and there are other organizations that may be interested that our target is from those, is seven-hundred-thousand. That's where it comes with that. The next one is five-hundred-thousand dollars. This is for a CAT grant to apply for the state. We believe we can get up to five-hundred-thousand dollars, that's what we put in there. Now I'll remind you that unless we have a project, we can't apply for those grants unless we have a project. And then the last one is private fundraising, an amount of one-point-five million dollars. If you look at a whole, AZDC, Brenda Driver from AZDC is here this evening for questions, or if she has any comments, she's more than welcome to speak up. They are handling fundraising, and obviously, me asking them to put together the plan, this is the plan that they came up with with the private fundraising. You, I don't need to read that, you can see what that is. So if you total up the numbers I just went over, it comes up to one point, or excuse me, fourteen million four-hundred-thousand dollars. That doesn't mean we're going to spend fourteen million dollars on a wellness center. It means there's potential for private fundraising to get that amount of money, join in what the city really has on hand, fairways donation, and what we may bond. So we have some room there, at least on the targets of what we have for the funding. The next part of my presentation, the third part, is the proposed phases of it. So if you can see on the hand, there's the, the number one, or excuse me, the first phase of this program is finalize plan to construct a centralized wellness and recreation center. Now, if we go forward at that as phase one, obviously, what we will need, continue in phase two, is to hire a recreation director to run the wellness center, but not only run the wellness center, but run the recreation programs in the city boom. That means collaboration with schools, collaboration with private sports organizations for soccer and basketball and everything. That person that we hire there will run those and get those up to speed. So that, that comes in with phase two. Phase three, we're going to be the actual Phase three, we're going to do the actual construction of it, of the Wellness Center. And as I mentioned, fourth, on to phase four, build relationships in collaboration with other agencies to build, such as the Wellness Center, but to build recreational programs in the city for you, which I think we all agree there's been a demand for and, and ask for. So that's why it's important that it's part of this, part of this project as well. Phase five of this, as we now move it on, after the Wellness Center, part of this project is to enhance our soccer boom, that's pretty good here. So we've identified some areas that we think we can enhance and make it do fairly easily, hopefully, and make in soccer booms, for youth soccer and things like that. So that would be part of phase five of this program. And then the last phase of this, phase six, is looking at and supporting and doing some renovation and refurbishment, all the top of it, to enhance those programs as well. And you will see with these phases, this is just not a Wellness Center, this is a whole number of phases to work to improve the recreation and the lifestyle and everything for residents in the city to help us with, hopefully, other people, young families, yes, should come to boom. So, in conclusion, what we're asking for tonight, and I'm questioning whether you want me to go to my conclusion, you want me to stop, since the, the three parts are done with the questions, so I don't know. Okay, so going to the conclusion, what council, what staff is asking tonight is that, and it's in the agenda on three D, is fixing, program resolution, fixing a date for a meeting on proposition of issues of bond not receivable, ten million dollars. This would be at the, at the June twenty first council. At seven, at, or excuse me, at six P M. In conclusion, so to cover some things that we're also working on, I want to remind council that the final bond amount, amount will depend on the private fundraising and in addition to the fundraising on seven hundred thousand participations, contributions, and collaboration with the hospital and county, et cetera. I, I don't, I can't stress enough in part to the private fundraising and collaboration with other entities on this project. It's got to be a joint project, the city cannot do this alone. I would never sit up here and tell you that this city can do this on its own because it can't. Private fundraising is very important in this project if we decide to move forward. As you know, councilman, boarder, myself, are leaving in the morning for Washington D C with some other representatives from Ainsy D C and Exeter County. We'll be meeting with federal elected officials, this, or this Wellness Center is the top of our list, to talk with them, with agencies on how, about possibly getting some federal dollars for a project like this. And the reason I, I say this, I'll just remind you that years ago, the mayor did a ton of work lobbying Washington for an overpass, if you remember, it's in a different location than it is now. There were appropriations made there, the Wellness Center, but there were appropriations made there, the total, I think, around one point six million. So point six, that point six million, in the first allocation, we ended up getting that, that went to the overpass project, which helped us with our overall costs of what we've been, as you know, we signed a twenty D agreement with the county on the overpass project to help them with the cost. That's part of the, the fairway thing tonight, of them donating, giving the city a hundred thousand dollars to help us with our expenses. And then you have that one million, and as I've talked to you before, that one million, working with the O T, we were able to appropriate that one million dollars. That as well went to the overpass project, if you remember. But with that said, the O T also deposited a million dollars in our Sherpa account in Des Moines that we benefited from, that helps us pay for the South Bay and West Park area paper company. To remember, we, we're not going to have the borrowed money to that, we've got most of the money in the bank for that project, that one million dollars went for that. So that's the reason I just mentioned that, that's the importance of going to D C tomorrow, to talk to those federal officials, if they try to get on the radar for that. And then one of the top projects that we have, was what I asked you about, maybe it's not part of this presentation, I consider it sets level two main projects that we're then talking about. So, I'll just I'll just conclude by saying that this Wellness Center, it's not just a Wellness Center, it's all your life, recreation, it's investment in our community. And I expect to submit to you of your consideration, and I'll answer the questions.
Well, I'm a strong supporter, I, I really support the need for community Wellness Center. I guess I have a question on, I know we're talking about the funding, are we where are we in this process? So we're talking about same design, same financial firm, same, or are we, I mean, are we kind of starting over, or are we both seeing where we are at?
From a staff point of view, at least at this point, we are looking for direction from council. Thank you for supporting Wellness Center, and that you want to move forward with it. I certainly think that what has been accomplished up to this point is not going to be tossed aside, it's certainly going to be considered. I certainly think that if we move forward with this project, that councilman Morgan, as you know, chair, and I kind of know, me and myself, will have some conversation with the whole to move forward. But what we're trying to accomplish tonight is, and then on the twenty first, through that public hearing, if you ultimately decide that we have a project, so that we can
Then those decisions.
There's no decision. Yeah, I, I'll be honest with you, I really don't want to bog down in details on, for example, how many actuums we're going to have, but I mean, it just doesn't accomplish, and it doesn't accomplish, we're looking for an open call.
Right, and I think it's important for you to realize, we're just not open to that discussion because I just, I don't want, we can think, what we did before, we're just going to run it all through again, and yeah, and see if that works. I think we need to step back and look at how funded they have been, proceed with.
And I work at the direction of elected officials, so whatever we want to do. In fact, as a matter of fact, we can't fundraise, or apply for grants, or anything like that, until we have a project. So, once, once we have a project, I can tell them right away how that, everything's on the table. The location is set, but, but everything is on the table. There are changes that we have discussed that are going to be made, based on some of the conversations I've had with other Wellness Center, and based on some of the input that we've had. So everything's on the table. We're going to, we're going to start fresh once, once we have a project.
And I agree with that, I, I had input from community members and, and comments, and I think we need to consider that, that we get the input and, and step back and look and see. And maybe we don't speak very much, but maybe we, maybe we can make some changes.
What, what concerns me a little bit is that until a couple of days ago, as E chair, I was briefed on what's going on on this plan. But, there has been a lot of misinformation out there about what's going on. And, I don't appreciate that, that, I, I don't know how, how that information, that out there, because I was just briefed, no one else on this council had been briefed on this information.
I guess I have a pretty much discussion.
Well, I received, I, I received some alarming information about what's going on behind the scenes here, and I don't appreciate that because this is new. This is, this is completely different, and the information that's being spread out there is disinformation.
It might be, because this is the first thing for.
Right, well, understandably so. I, I, I can show you the evidence if you want to see it. But, going forward, until we have a project, we can't move forward. We can't fundraise, we can't apply for CAT grants, we can't, we can't go, we can't go to people and say, hey, give us a quarter million dollars. We don't know what for, but, yeah, that's what. So, listen, like I said, everything's on the table, the retail's gone. Several of the things that were brought up, you know, as you, as you want to say, are being considered. And we're, we're going to start pressuring that community, we'll have fresh input, but until we have a project, we're not going to be able to leave. Mayor Flanome, Brenda Dryer, as I mentioned, is here. Brenda, do you have any comments? You often do your work, made my job easy. Is there anything that I left out that you would like to add? Yes, now, sure. Okay, just want to be pretty certain. In the report, would you please take your time to read the quotes that we have from some citizens, from Reynolds Kramer, I'm just missing, I apologize, from Fairway, the mayor, Mr. Houston is here, please take this time to read them, if you would.
So I want to take you back through March, when, when we had the field vote, it was that really, also meeting after that, that you all asked our offices to put together a plan about how can the community move forward. You know, we were all, I believe, more than this is important for boom. So, the report you got tonight, and, and the one we briefed Bill Mon and Terry got earlier this week, is what's in front of you. And, and what I would, I would stress for everybody is, part of what our charter was, is to understand really where, where is the P D Act in terms of potential funding. The ARPA funds, if somebody's asking, why, why is that now just coming up? What I would tell you is really, that is because there have been communities that have tossed that out there, now it's not a challenge. So we know now, ARPA can be used, because this is important. These are important things across the country that, that are making a difference in communities. So, the ARPA was, is new, the CARES money, which is tied all that became new. So, again, that's why there's more than, than ten million dollars position, because these are just possible, possible sources. It's so, one of the things that, that we also did in conjunction with identifying possible sources and understanding where your balances are, I, it's, it's confusing. I've been working with councils for almost thirty years, and it's hard to know what different funding schemes are, so we're trying to make that in your report as easy as possible. Does that give a sense of where, where maybe a fundraising campaign could, could come together? And so, I consulted a number of folks within the community, Dan and I did, and, and the plan that we put forward in your report, I feel is very reasonable. I think it's, I, I think we can exceed that goal. And, and again, what we need to know, that, that if we start working on that, that there's going to be a project. What it looks like, how all the final funding pieces come together, you know, we, we'd like to get moving on that. So I, I guess that's where I would stress for folks that might see the numbers, have the facts, and thought, they're talking about a quarter million dollar. No, we're just positioning the potential sources of funds. And, and I too would jump back to, to Debbie's quote. It's been very exciting to be a part of the Main Street application. I'm thrilled at, at response to that application. And, and I think Debbie knocked it out of the park with her quote, is, it's one thing to talk about health, but really, as you start looking at maybe investments in your downtown and investments in things like Wellness Centers and Recreation Centers, and it's also about a long-term investment in health. And I, I don't know that I could have said that better. I certainly, again, as I sat through school screenings and I heard some of the objections on the centralized locations, I tried in a very simple way to say, there are ways to overcome those objections. So again, that's in our part, I certainly want to take some time to look at your report, follow up with the, after the fact message via Philip, and I'll be on the Washington trip too. But I'd be glad to answer the questions on how we got to the data that we did, there's probably more that's behind the report that you got. But I, I certainly chance here, and I can, he, I consulted him all along on the private fundraising, and I'd like to give the window a little bit of his thoughts on that.
Thank you for allowing me to speak on the app before. Comes down to three realities, one, build relationships, private, we all know that. Two, this is what I feel, this is bigger than this, right? This is all the place, all the bite, all kinds of different elements. Three, reality is it takes much, that's what it takes. So I'm, I'm going to put a group together to, to work on the project basis.
I know it was brought up, I think you need to understand, one of the main reasons I think you got shot down last time was because of franchise fees. That's all, or this, this throws out, when there's no franchise fees, so we're going to raise the money, turn this thing on, so. I know that was huge off the process, so. But I also know there's people out there now, they're already, they see it come out on the agenda, and they're like, we're going to shoot it down and get a petition. So I know, I see these things, it's fine, I just think the best we can do, it's something we need. There's going to be people who will never convince that it's the right thing. But I mean, think of the kids, and I talk to more people, I talk to a ton of people, every day, leaving their aims, or the other place, you don't have a place for the stuff. So, just keep those things in mind, and we're going to be very transparent, and just do the best we can to get this done. Do you have any doubts or comments?
Just one, thanks for putting this, this is great, so thank you for that. It's something we, it's reality, I don't know.
I do appreciate this report, I appreciate the robust layout of the funding structure and collaboration that has already evolved for this. And I think that with this funding structure in place, that, that's going to be something that citizens will definitely appreciate. I also appreciate the increased awareness of how important this type of project is to the overall economy and quality of life that people will have, that live in boom, will want to relocate to boom. And it's definitely investment in our future, in our children, and even in our elderly, who will use this quite a lot. You may or may not know that we actually have lost one fitness center this year as well, so the need continues to increase. However, when we originally started this procedure, we had talked about the general election bond vote. When we initially set the bond vote for March first, that was not a general election bond vote, we got the ten percent turnout, okay? We still have the opportunity for general election bond vote, that would have been the same date as the one presented for the first bond vote, so it would not be extended any, anytime past what that original bond vote would be, November twenty twenty two. So, since the citizens rejected the first proposal, I can't in good conscience not let them have the opportunity to approve this on their own, and give them the agency and their blessing to do that. So, I want to ask, is there a way to set this out publicly, Jim? Is there a way to structure this so that automatically it goes to a vote, or with these local office of sales tax bond referendums, does it have to be initiated by citizens?
Well, would we have council to decide out if we want to proceed, if they want to vote, or if they want to proceed as outlined here, those are the two options.
Okay. Okay. Well, I would take the opportunity now to motion to put this to a vote on November twenty twenty two.
What staff is asking for, it's on the agenda, is a reapproval of residence. overall.
Mormons?
Yes.
Oh, Piper?
Yeah.
Williamson?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Again?
Yes.
Sign?
No.
Okay, next up, we have a voluntary reconsideration of rezoning request from the reserves at Hawkeye. 1700 Block Hawkeye Drive and C1 Special Commercial District, the C2 Limited Commercial District, near Iowa. And if we have people here. We're going to open comments, obviously. You're going to do a presentation, right?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, we do have, I do need to note under, there's great comments, we do have great comments this evening. There's petition that was turned in and. Let me read the petition. It says, "We, undersigned owners, members of Gulf, Gulf State Subdivision, Flat A subdivision in Boone County, Iowa, do not want to have apartments built on the west side of Southland between Kate Shelley Drive and Hawkeye Drive. We are not opposed to development of this land owned by Sally Corr. We do not feel that a fourth apartment complex on Southland is in the best interest of the growth of Boone, Iowa. Apartment dwellers do not pay land real estate taxes. We are concerned about the probable increase in traffic and safety of the residents who walk and drive in the Southland neighborhood. Please be courteous to us residents living on Southland and reconsider building more apartments." I have to note, properties within 200 feet of the proposed, there's three of them. That have been 200 feet. Jim, maybe you can explain what that means?
Well, there are actually 12 properties within 200 feet. And our ordinance says that if 20% of those property owners object, then it requires a super majority, which in this case would be five most of them. Or have to prove this ownership. In this case, we do have a petition which includes three property owners, so that exceeds the 20%. So in order to approve this, we need five of them to come inside.
With that, I'll turn to listen. Yeah, can I first, I can share you on the way back.
Hi, Jim. Just make rave stand up that whole time. So that's everybody. There's been, it's been about 15.
Okay, this here, my name is Fresh Johnson. Family marker, little property rental base in Boone, Kansas. Thank you, I'm pretty much in tune here. It consists of a quarter, the landlord, he's here on behalf of his family, as well as our tax engineers. I know there's been some discussion about this, obviously. This is not unusual. Typically, when we come to a new community, most people like to know, first of all, who we are, by repairing their town from another state. And are we capable of delivering on promise? Obviously, planning and zoning, the current statistics, appreciate that, we're hopeful that you guys have questions, right? That you may clear up certain misconceptions that are associated with rental housing. So today, to start this off, we can get into as much detail as I've heard you. At any point during the presentation, you can stop, ask questions as they come up. If they're in the block, if they're here. First one is, is a slide that is a brief video. And it's not so much us talking about ourselves, our company and what we do. It's from others that we've developed, their communities, whether they be payers, whether they're council members, whether they're city staff. To get an understanding and continue of what it's like when we come into. So hopefully this is loud enough for you guys to hear.
We have businesses that we here had ago that would like this plan. And one of the barriers is employees. And so it aren't even, can't be made that because of the lack of availability of housing, the, the employers aren't able to actually draw in enough employees to cover the jobs available.
I like your experience. Well, it's been very good. And I said I have also serve the, they're a very professional group. They have a good plan, they understand the plan. They do a good job of articulating the plan, explaining it. It's been a very good working relationship. We, when they first came on the scene, we were from Kansas City area and we thought, I think, okay, or somebody from outside coming in to tell us what we need to do. It's all been really, found it to be a very pleasant experience. They've been very cooperative. We actually, we did some due diligence. We found out a little bit more about them, found out that they did a good job in other communities. We actually even sent a, a team out to, to see a couple of the complexes that they've done in surrounding communities. And they came back very first.
Hi, I'm the president next to the Highlander Department of the county. Of course, I was completely opposed to the moving in. I had two children on my own and I was a little worried that crime rate increases and, you know, those type of people I move in and it was completely the opposite. I actually have two little neighbor boys that come over for the kids all the time. And it's really created a lot of issues. I actually had the other one come over and help me do some errands because my husband's not in town.
As far as I'm concerned, over them, if they, if they have a question and they didn't know the answer, they make sure the next time they take a census, they get an answer. They seem very professional, very dedicated to the project as far as cleanup quality, housing residential area, and someone would be proud to call home. And it's done in a way that addresses all the concerns of the neighboring citizens and infrastructure needs in the city.
You know, there are a few things I really like about the apartments, they are very clean and they're well-kept. It's not somewhere you're embarrassed to have people come over and see. There are places I've lived before that the owners or managers, they don't take care of things. But they really take care of things here really well.
The terms surrounding income qualified, I caught a lot of people's attention. However, over the course of reviewing the project and folks becoming more comfortable with the concept, and I think a lot of neighborhood meetings and attention to detail by the developers allowed this project to move forward and is now really a point of pride, meeting in much needed area of our housing market.
Well, I would tell them we'll send it out there, be open-minded about it. Don't, don't give judgment to what your research on it and try to get to know what it's about.
Any misconceptions about this project have been proven false because of the, the quality of ownership that they build in their, in their units and the fact that they take care of the units. They don't just build, won't appear to be quality units, that they take care of them. You know, the, the landscaping is trimmed on a regular basis, the yard is well on a, on a regular basis. The exterior maintenance is done on a regular basis. So you know, you can build something on a level, but if you don't take care of it, it's going to go down pretty quickly. And they seem to take care of the properties.
So hopefully that gives you insight now. Obviously, that is geared towards a lot of people that live around. I realize this council is very familiar with that. Fox Point, their application, I don't know that that knowledge have on technically tax credits. That didn't really go into that detail. I'm happy to press a question that's certainly might have related to neighbors' plan here. It often gets confused with section eight, it's not that. It's called subsidized housing, it's not that. There's some other myths, I heard in comments at earlier presentations tonight about misconceptions, this might be out there. I hear that out of the block when I come to the community investor. But honestly, it's a topic people are, are excited about. But as you can see from that map there, in the last 20 years since I started the company, we developed over 70 apartment complexes in six states, including four here on, probably one of the, probably one of the bulging ones two here. So we have a good reputation, not just all those states, also in Iowa. It would like to be neighbors and purpose here. As we go through this, and these are all in your handouts, I'm not going to focus on all of the details and points to this. Stuff you can take on reading. But we have numerous awards. There's a list of some of the top awards we've had for the last, oh, 13 years. Our properties, as you saw in the video, have evolved over the past 15 years. We used to build the same product over and over again. We started looking at more of a mixed income to a good market rate. So our communities don't just have income restrictions, we also cater to anyone, whether they be seniors or if you're a doctor that needs a place to live, who's coming into town, there's no house available. You guys understand that here in Boone, not a lot of wholesale signs. We would say as well, if you need housing for every type of residence, workforce housing is ideal for the properties that you build. I pulled up here the next three or four slides are communities specifically right here in Iowa. Take a look at those. We will be bringing our more advanced design, which is centered around this concept, which is the Steenbo Springs, all around. Now, their affordable rents are much higher than what we see here in this very affordability out there is a whole different. You'll see rents bump up against 1300 bucks, Steenbo does, they've got, there's more people that are working and winning 60,000, but probably not the same rents here, for sure. This is going out in West Texas. Again, all of our communities, we try to adapt it to the local architecture. We also do a lot of work of interior design and decorating. This one I found pretty interesting for tonight. This is where my hometowns line ends. That's the HDB building, that is where Big Jean's first exterior is. It's built in 1998. And we just finished and completed that now as rental houses in. What was really interesting is the thing that kicked this off was our company's launch of fundraising and development of the rec center in downtown Sarin. And it was a public private partnership, which was absolutely critical. We get it, I don't, so here you guys talked tonight about the wellness center. So why it would be a great town, talking. Not only did it think about that development, but numerous others in downtown. So really it was a great success. Albuavilla, another development Steenbo. This is our development, we actually made two developments there. One in 2014 and one last year. Now specifically about Hawkeye. I know a lot of people have commented, have had some discussion, D and Z, traffic, we can get into that tonight. Looking at the site plan, top-down view. You can see that we have two buildings. This sits on seven acres. We're surrounded by approximately 50 acres, but C1's on commercial. Obviously, our parents don't even see one, and we're asking to have that adjusted to C2 of special circumstances which will allow for us to have apartments. There is no other C2 ground in the city that fits our needs for that is available. We did look out west. There's no R3 zones, so those findings, so I get to go ahead and have this done C2, which we agreed to. Which does allow for apartments. This is a polarized version of that site plan. We're looking at approximately a $12 million investment. Now that is through an allocation from our finance authority. These funds are in place, just like Fox Point. They went through the same application process, they applied for the same restrictions that we have on people there. As you can see here, we highlighted several amenities, green space, which we intend to leave northwest. On the same parcel. Also a playground, clubhouse will be contained within, whatever. When you look at the amenities, I think you saw some of this in the video. These will be the nicest apartments. And I can say that definitively. We have predominantly developed in rural communities. And we have always found that we can get a lot of walk-ups that want to live in our apartments, but they either are overqualified from an income standpoint or age standpoint, if it's a senior. But everything from high efficiency appliances, LED lighting, walking closets. You know, we, we found early on, including washer and drawers as well in there. Because we don't want them moving in and out or having to. So there's things we might do in the past 20 years as far as what works and what doesn't. And then again, development has numerous amenities nearby as well. We have onsite management, most do, so our manager will live on properties. We've also had a leasing agent during the lease-up period. So typically, we try to work law enforcement, but they have some first-year officers that are coming into town. We find it very beneficial to offer a beat discount on rent to them, to allow them to, or their patrol car there. Or, you know, exchange for reduced rent, you know, give the parking lot once over every couple times a home. That goes a long ways for not only our residents, but for neighboring communities as well. Now, the rental history for this, this is what it takes to rent an affordable apartment. Not just in our community, but anybody under the section 42 program. And when you look through that at the bottom, it talks about if you've had a felony, you can't rent for months. In fact, you can't rent for a period of 10 years if you haven't, even if it's bad and such. In the misdemeanor or seven years, you don't just walk in and walk out of an apartment. This is a process, typically takes about two weeks. Our management company will do proof of employment, background checks. We don't have to accept them. Now, a market rate apartment, you generally gain them in a fill-out application, pass the credit check, and you're in. Section 42 has very strict, strict rules on that we all follow. Here's a breakdown on our rents. 48 units, they range from 650 square feet up to 1,000. We do have five market rate units in the 48. You can see our rents range from about 30 You can see our rents range from about thirty, or sorry, five twenty to seven twenty five, I think we do have some market rate that are eighty fifty, dates of the. And that building that we just saw is actually the model we'll be using here. Okay, so more information on the site. This is a tax break paying entity, we have not asked for any tip for taxation, or any grants. So all the funding, we traditionally don't unless there's no other way to get it developed. So if we can come in and run our models and our performance to show that we don't need outside funds, we don't ask. Because sometimes that's a barrier to entry, we still don't have the ability to do that with where we're all. So we did not ask, and we don't intend to ask, the way it's modeled, we can't ask. Well, by the way, we did our application on the state. Traffic, this will be the front one, and Matt, I hope you're ready to cut the whole way over there and probably have to come up and answer some questions, but. We had a study done, cities engineer actually reviewed it and through P and Z, his quote is down there at the bottom. But he agreed with our study, but when you look at this, and I've been doing development for a long time, these things are complicated and hard to read, so I've kind of highlighted it here. This study was taken without our apartments proposed. And those intersections that you see there are showing current trends during peak drive time by the hour. That on the left is without our forty eight units. And as we go through this and look at the right side. I'll show you the delta or the difference between the number of cars that are going during that same peak time versus what it would be without our apartments. So coming south on Wind Street and taking a right, heading west, we have one additional car per hour in P. Again, this is all through the study, it's been vetted and reviewed by your engineers as well. Going straight south through the intersection, we add zero, or we will add zero, she said. Taking a left and heading east, we have one. If someone's coming from the east and turns right and heads north, we got one. We had five of them heading straight west on Hawk Valley. If they take a left, we add zero. If they're coming north on Wind Street, take a right, zero. We had two if they go a few north, following up past our property on Wind. And if they take a left and head west, we add one. As you can see here, coming from the west, the total we added is three. So altogether during that P time, which Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, was four to six PM. At least, I think I remember that correctly, we, we added fourteen. Now, I've heard some comments that people said, well, the study was done over Christmas and college was not in session. That doesn't matter in this stuff, and the reason I say that, no matter if theirs on the left increased by tenfold. Our impact on that is still fourteen. So all the uses that you can have for this site, I mean, current zoning in C one, which you'll see up here. All the commercial is down below, our numbers are on the top right. You can see the daily rates during P are much higher for what is currently allowed. And that could be any commercial development, you've got, you know, a superstore, you've got a pharmacy, fast food. I know there's a desire for commercial development, everybody wants that, they're high tax pay, they're good for the community, it's that little building that we all talked about or heard about earlier. Those developers are coming here because they see rooftops, but not enough. And the background is sat out there for a long time, nothing on it, including some existing commercial nearby that is vacant. So it's a chicken and egg, what do you want first, you want commercial, everybody wants a grocery store, that's the first thing everybody will say. The grocery store developer wants rooftops. Yes?
That, I mean, explain that, the traffic numbers. And you did a survey and actually accumulated those, or those are just guesses, I, I guess, tell me a little bit more about that one.
Matt's our engineer, civil, the, the traffic study, and then he submitted that to P and Z, you have more engineer reviews all of that.
We were onsite, we set out and we observed the traffic per day of December and we talked about the differences with DMAT. We referenced an existing source available that provides how many trips in and out on a peak hour basis, so that's sort of an element. It's based on the number of units, so that's our best source we had to go with. And we looked at the existing traffic contents of that intersection. Looked at how much would increase by development aside from different directions. And that's what you're seeing on that table, the plus three, the plus one. That's an approximate number, but that's, that's close to an estimate.
And since we didn't see your fully complex, wouldn't those be higher like at seven to eight in the morning or maybe end of the workday?
Yes, we, we looked at it and what we're showing you is the P hour, it was more on the latter part of the day. More important now, people getting home, there's a lot of traffic to Walmart, so that'll still be with the development of a lot of people wanting to go to Walmart.
Get into a weekday.
We were looking at the weekday, based on the meaningful, that was the.
What did you base your numbers on since DMAT wasn't?
We did a physical traffic count.
Right, do you have any second? How do you protect what DMAT would do?
We have not protected what DMAT would do. We've been gathering that information, but it wouldn't change the impact of development in terms of plus three and plus one. So whatever issues that you have now, that slide really showed the change. That's, that's all we've, all, all.
Yeah, the keys are, the key to think about in that, or it is, no matter if the traffic comes tripled during DMAT being session. During those same peak hours, power impact is still a net plus four. And that, that's explaining how they figure that formula. But when you look at all of these available uses for current zone, as well as even single family houses, which is not. But if, let's say it went to a single family though, single family generates more loss stress data that parts that found weird around there. That study, it's not there, and that seems a study. Typically in an apartment with one, two, three bedrooms, you're going to have a lot of single parents, sometimes you will have a young married couple. Or you'll have someone who's just coming out of college. With one person in three bedroom home ranch, they probably got a husband and wife, have a car, possibly a child or two also. So when you think about what is the best use of this ground. One has been proven that it's not something that John, that CNN offers on the commercial. We're not taking a big bite of what's available in the for commercial for C one, taking a seven acre bite. And we believe, and you've seen, I'd like for you guys to talk some things you did. That having forty eight units and twelve million dollar development, it gets other types of help. And the new style of development communities is more of a mixed approach. This being a central victory point, coming into Moon, it won't burn ahead of the technical insurance. And having houses that are nearby and want the roaming factor to where you can live, work, eat, play, all close. That's a strong unit, it does, so again, you're hearing from me, you're seeing this type of development, rental housing. Doesn't matter with market rate or not, you're going to see strong impacts that triple through other types of development. So again, you can, you can take a look at these numbers, thanks, or you get this, that into your project council.
Yes.
Okay. And almost for Matt.
What did the traffic studying indicate had they happened in that edition?
We then specifically addressed the safety in terms of our recommendation. But looking back at the traffic study that was done, two thousand and eleven, the Walmart was being women. It showed that over time, you would get a lot of that long hot, hot item Walmart. And the hallway stop might be warranted. And we looked at that again during our traffic analysis. And we, we saw that based on the number of crashes, based on the number of traffic across the hot item, that could be warranted. We just recommended that if the city's concerned about the crashes involving the traffic, that you look further. And the city's traffic engineer also agrees.
Another thing that we are offering to do is include the sidewalks, both on. A little bit south, east and west corrections on, on our property and hopefully on properties to be more well at our expense. And that's the benefit of amenities apartments, but also play into developing some people that are in the neighborhoods nearby that appears to be the same type.
On that point, I had a discussion a little bit about east, west adjacent properties as well, trying to best work with them. Especially to the east, getting connected with foot traffic and bicycle traffic to retailers that exist there. Some partnerships should be mutual beneficial because Walmart is a fairway. That's a very dangerous, but.
Yeah, we don't a hundred percent control that.
Yeah, I'm just saying that's a very strong suggestion, we're actually looking into that, I know you mentioned South, but that is less just.
That's a little.
There's a lot to consider because there's a large sidewalk that's built in. The blockability is correct, because you're essentially located with Walmart, Fairway and Casey's. And we are okay, Dick Donalds for that.
We do have some linear estimates already, we're working internally on our property and property for the more. Make your air jump in, but I know that we've been working on that. Us one.
We're staying ready for the property right eventually.
Again, this is an expense, it wasn't one that we weren't aware of. We did know potentially could be something that people would want. Again, we're not asking for a dollar from the city to help with that. We are asking for any help, for anyone that might know, but the best way to approach it. Again, we're looking at a very long term investment here, the whole board section twenty two has to be in the program through. So it's not something where we change our mind during two years of government to maternity council. It has to remain our, of the park, this program's been around at the start of the great administration eighty six. So it's one of the most successful federal programs that's out there, especially for housing, all the people's successful and by force support. So we know it works, we've proven it over and over again, it works, we've never had one fail. And that's in here in the program, it's one of the lowest foreclosure rates in P type of development out there, so. Real quick, just to go through this, we're looking to take it from C one to two. As you can see by the comprehensive plan there, there wasn't a lot of options for us, way out to the west, there was C two. But it wasn't, we didn't have the amenities nearby, didn't have the mobility factor, and it wasn't available. So we're working on a new spending, a new creation is enough to entertain our idea. There is no R three, and in the market studies that we've conducted, I'm kind of skipping around here, but you can see that. The C one that is surrounding us, there's a lot of streets there out there that's available. So when people say they want commercial that's great, there's plenty, plenty of opportunities. I think trying to bring in the housing first is pretty, we would jumpstart that one with the housing. Again, full sub look or a site for middle, what's though. When you look at the uses under the current zoning, you know, I talked about this earlier. You can see that restaurants, fast food, gas station, car wash, those are all types of development that should be currently submitted for her. Obviously we have some discussion, but no reason, so we look at, that's more than two minutes lines, but. When you look at what we're asking for, our only variance is that under the C two, I'm sorry, under the C one, we couldn't put apartments. And our height was three four, that's four feet over, so that's the only thing we don't do. So we were asking that, and we believe, we'll be very, we'll look into the southwest here, it's more rough shot. You can see there's some drainage, we are not on that. Part of the ground, one, seven acres right up against the hard corner, south side of the, of the horse. Just looking back to the northeast. Get our apartments, we have that bar, oriented to the right. And now we're looking southeast. And that's pretty much the driver looking here there is where our two buildings will be. And a final look back to the northwest, gives you a good look at that hard corner there. Where we'll be touching. So there were market studies done, we don't just randomly pick sites, there is some thought that we put into it. We conducted commission, the voluminary market study back in February two thousand and twenty one. And that came back very favorable. And what we always skip to, the inch and a half market study, there's a lot of stuff in there that's fairly common language, but the thing we always look at is capturement. You can see there, the voluminary study shows a point six, seven point seven capturement. What that means is based on the income restrictions under this program, that's the percent that we have to capture. In order to fill our forty eight units. So as you see there in twenty twenty one July, I feel, the allocating agency, the state agency, they ordered their own market study. And it came back showing point two to whatever, to seventy seven. And then our final market study, which we commissioned through no credit, which is a national known market analyst, they came back at point two to three point seven. You guys are short on housing, you're short on housing for a lot of different income levels, but certainly for a workforce level like this. And to see that number and to have all these units that they comped out against here in Moon, that showed zero vacancy, there's a waiting list right now at Alice. You guys have to get ahead of this, and I've seen communities where they don't. And that's, that's not a warning, it's more of a, based on what we're treating this world, if you're playing catch up on housing. That kind of stops the whole shift for growth, you guys are a growing community, it's a great community. I think this will keep you on pace to do better in terms of mining what's needed, because Walmart. They have people who qualify to live in our apartments. You know, just driving around the neighborhood, there are plenty of businesses there that could use housing wherever it's right next to it. And I think this serves that well, so I encourage you to look at those market studies, hopefully after we've improved it tonight, just to see where you guys are at or haven't shared. This, this goes into further detail, I know it's impossible, we got to write it in a, hit map, you put this together anyway. But that does show the apartment communities that we looked at, the market analysts looked at, show the severe new form of warehouse. So this kind of summarizes it up, you know, I think the key point there on all those bullet points, we're not asking for a dollar. We're asking for you to continue to support this like P and Z did. And allow us to continue our process to get the ground broken on this hopefully by the end of this year. So with that, any questions?
I have a question on, oh, four. Yellow and dark, how, how big is our housing shortage? I mean, is it serious, do we really have, I don't have a handle on that, I'm wondering if there's a feeling strongly for housing. Where are we with that?
Information from Realtors are there are not enough houses for sale.
They sell quickly, I know.
There's a waiting list at Alice Place, Alice Place is a senior alumni project, I was banned, or the waiting list there.
Okay, so it's all. Okay, so it's full. I mean, it's the.
And as you know, this counts on a sign in agreement of from the project up at twenty-second Lynch, which is forty acres. Two sixteen plus and then some duplexes or townhomes and trial.
And are those purchased or I mean are those?
Those are, oh, sorry. Those are low money income. That's a low money income project.
Okay.
Up at twenty-second, forty units.
So those will be available.
Mind not talking about that.
No, I'm not.
And here you go. Sure, you have the project at twenty-second Lynch. You have a waiting list at Alice Place, which is a senior LMI project. Um, and talking with Realtors periodically, they wish there were more houses. I can tell you that our, excuse me, our housing starts this year have been slower, talking with your building official at Higgins. Uh, the permits for new homes is slow. Obviously, we believe that has to do with the economy of inflation. Short answer to your questions, yes. We can always use more housing. And we believe we can fill it.
This is Mary. I have two areas that we're doing want to also. Is it's.
Thank you. I'm the mayor of the council. Thank you for having me and speaking today. My mother Sally um couldn't be here. She tested some of her health concerns over the last couple of months and she physically can't be here. So. On behalf of her, on behalf of. As an official matter, I would just like to say that, uh, the quarter family's been very actively involved with the interior. I think I'll either give my father and love on father. He was one of the biggest factors, one of the biggest supporting the mom is alive. Uh, my mother, uh, has been very actively involved with the interior for the last sixty years. The three of us quarter boys were raised here from high school here and while we're in a different part of the world, now Boone is always home. Always looked up opportunities to the engagement to what we can do with that place. Over and out in the future. As a release to this property, we own this property for a number of years. And it is up for commercial right now. Um, it's been actively uh actively marketed as a commercial property and actively a market is being available for. Probably the last two and a half years, the last two and a half years, um, we had zero interest in that form of commercial development. The business owner, the builder, anything along those lines. And we certainly believe that as a family, uh, that that Boone needs both commercial development and also residential development. And we have found, at least in our experiences, in the ways to this time, that there is not commercial interest to get. Uh, commercial development, purchasing this, the dog, the unit, the commercial asset. So with every gig, we're putting the idea of residential on the front, yeah, on the site. I think the market studies show that, and I'll see if you're scared, it's stressful, based on your question, on the ability to addition housing. We weren't going to sell it just to build housing. Um, the last thing that we would want would be something that I'll come in and try and build the maximum amount of units you could fill on the property. Uh, to build them as quickly as possible, as cheaply as possible, not making them. Uh, and to essentially just hold them until they reach the depreciation schedule, whatever taxes and stuff like that. Then you sell the property. Um, we don't want to do that. That's not good for Boone. It's not good for the area. Um, properties like that quickly become high source. Uh, they use an inordinate amount of public resources and putting the police. And we don't want that. So we had to look at materials, which we love to evaluate as a law, we need my eight. Number one, uh, we wanted to develop, we wanted someone with a track record, a developer with a track record. Similar properties, um, there could be. It also wanted high quality construction. We wanted construction with this lot. Uh, but the standard pleasing, the fit of it in general, protection areas of the area. That we can keep the main theme on the other faces. We wanted that long term watch. We wanted someone who wanted partners with the community to become part of the on what we need. We found all of those with all. At least the elevation, the quarter family, the unit, there's a number of factors. Uh, that I like is we didn't get a significant amount of high quality, affordable housing. It would consistently maintain for long term, but there's also financial. If they're going to need it, they'll not ask you to. She has any questions? That's what's going on with wants, the finances are going to be. There's also a very significant impact of the taxes. It it's no secret right now, which broke. And uh, he gave, uh, there was two hundred and seventy-six followers here in taxes on that. So if you look at it, ten years with a normal tax increases, you're looking at a box of eight, three thousand dollars. They estimate it would be forty-five thousand dollars for a short. So you're looking at a ten-year rate of minimum two, approximately five hundred dollars. So it's also a huge financial issue. We think all of those things cut in favor of uh of council approving, approving those only plus. There's two other factors I would just ask to consider as you and you the base is coming yourself to make a decision. The first is without, I was trying to understand, it was a lot similar years. It was essentially a similar design. From C one to the one on X, similar to the last. And that did include taxes, which is a very successful project and it was also successful. We were also watching the council to give an accusation. It's certainly clearly being a zone, you know, not saying that it is. But the plan is on the important ways to really dig deep in this. Union House, sister brother, the design in parts is appropriate for the area, was appropriate project. Again, benefit to the city of the nation. They ordered six to one for the. Up there is a top product. So for all of those reasons, uh, the fourth thing that we need is a good project. It was very beneficial to the city of this. Not only a medium benefits, it's a long-term benefit, sounds relevant. We would expect the request of this court, excuse me, well, I think lawyer. We do an expected request of the city council, uh, approve this project, approve the use of the plus. I would rather have to, uh, to answer the questions that they may have for us.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Good question. One, as far as the. The unstaff manager and the famous and local Colonel that that local people hired.
Yeah. Sure, yes. Uh, we traditionally handle it. We have a regional game. Which we oversee. They operate independently. Uh, they almost named county percent of five. Our vote for. One, much easier. We're usually there because there's no housing, so the heart breaks out of the inside. Uh, two, they know best. They're community. And also a lot talking about they see a property that ensures well paid, knowing people. Uh, short notice, they're both part of a power. There's a lot of reasons for that, but they are overseeing and operated by experienced operating management. Uh, they're doing that. So we're on the hook as developer owner. It's not just like coming in and building a home and then on the dawn. Uh, we're building a marketway apartment without any federal oversight. Every year we're monitored by the state. And that's their job to report back to Fed, to the IRS with these tax credits. And we fall out of compliance for any reason, whether that's for renting to people that are outside of the eligibility requirements. We're not maintaining it well. Those tax investors want the credits from us. Are then on the hook. You can be subjected to recapture of the taxes. So that would put an end to my career as developer. Because once that happens, it doesn't take long to work, get around, move around, develop. I would challenge you find any other program out there that has modules. You know, in our part of to be a partner, that's the fellow who's approved. So management is brilliant. Absolutely. Uh, again, very similar to the management. We have a contractor, it's regional, that follows us, the state is there. What they do is they will first start by posting whatever subcontractor they're looking for. It's way more sense, cycle, uniform. Much easier with the equipment's already in place and down. Uh, you're going to find the trickle down and the steady down for every tax credit dollar that's invested in one of these apartment complexes. Eleven dollars and fifty-three cents flows back to you. That's through a lot of that's through the first being the ones, the curators, but also the employment of contractors and subcontractors. So, yeah, it it makes sense for us to do that.
And that last one, I asked, how do you handle when if somebody rents a unit? But they have maybe more people living in them than they're supposed to, or things like that, that's.
That that also falls under compliance. So having the outside management, uh, we have a policy in our company that our maintenance, uh, is monthly filter instructions. They can do that without us. Uh, the reason for that, one, check holders. But also to observe what's going on inside that unit. It's been good to hear. The things that they're doing to the unit that we do not like, having to be able to save. All of that removes that tenant. Once they violate any of that, we can remove them. They're having their boyfriend who has another job, his income would have to be applied to them. The qualification. So. A kid being in that unit with his girlfriend, that puts them out, which puts me in. So there's a very strict policy that we have to adhere to that our management sees. See public comments out there? I'll go ahead. You're the real on this, correct? I'm not here to speak with the world here. Both Boone's population at best within state. Did I do this? There's some boom. Two thousand twenty-two, they got boom. Twelve thousand one hundred and sixty-nine. Two thousand eleven, eleven years earlier, twelve thousand seven hundred and twenty-four. Two thousand four hundred and twelve thousand six hundred and ten, nineteen ninety, twelve thousand four hundred and four two, nineteen eighty, twelve thousand six hundred and two. Free state, who come back and put that in the hoppy boom. Uh, I'm I'm a traveler. When I go to, I go there to want, I go to want that. Mine's a city. Now, I put the time out, it's my little twenty-four. You know, the pro name is in that stretch that the bank or ten in that stretch, they have some presidential. Single-handed Robin in that stretch, they have a park building in that stretch. They have a power rights in that stretch. They have a mission bank, they have a vision bank in that stretch, they have McDonald's in that stretch, they're not a view of that stretch. You know, that's a private unit. Why would I have park buildings? She was that parked up. I go over here to Ames. What do I see along these? I see park buildings underneath the Marshall residence, gas station there, rest there, so. But these were driving through. What do I see when I drive into the room? Drive down the highway through the moon. Ask Walmart, that's still part of the show too. Just seeing one of the buildings. It's a bitch that blow. Pretty good score. That's that's fine. But then you really catch my eye from boom, from the height of it. His house, the right angle, lots of food that's scout space. We, well, yeah. Super rooms are a full time, you know, the backside. I suspect we're not the one here. Possibly this is not here, we'll be the same. I imagine there's no problem with that. More. Uh, both those, I think. As I understand, our county assessor, there's some city money going back from them, like two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in one. Again, I don't have any problem with that. It'd be a little bit of something, but a lot of time. And and the mom is working some, maybe in the city, the county, it's all a bit of some tax money. That's fine. This company right here, and I understand I'm not asking for one cent. Of of that, of that type of thing. I commend the this council, the, the number one, I would really envy about your wellness center. The station. But number two. Then we're going to develop two residential units, trying to give out a single residential plans. One up, uh, west of the division and Park on Park Avenue and one out by the middle of Winterville. Super nice, super nice. I don't think I'm going to build a house, even in Boone, Iowa, a new house, for less than two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Maybe to a half a million dollar. That certainly cuts out anybody that not voted modern income. We started with Boone in those thirty-two years. We start something and it's many things we don't really finish and carry it. You had an excellent start with Alice's place in the unit up in the north. But I think we really lower to ourselves to carry this through. And as I heard a gentleman talk, that was promoting, uh, news up north here a few months ago. That unit is not going to take care of Boone's voter modern income housing needs. I heard a council member say the same thing, of one of the council meetings, that we're not going to. But this might sort of hold us true. I was appreciative, Mr. Scare said. Thomas, but we have to entice people to move to Boone. The only way to entice people to move to Boone in my mind is housing. We need, we need, we need commercial, we need to invest. But if I'm a business owner or a restaurant owner, I'm not going to move to Boone, Iowa, and hope that people in Boone will take care of me. However, if I build Boone and there's plenty of population there, darn right I'm not going to be thinking about putting restaurants in Boone for putting this in Boone or whatever. So I. Hard to hit the horse on that. Uh, I think that's just about it, but I do, I appreciate your time. Uh. Uh, just one other thing with the diagram that was up there on on the screen, talking about the neighbors and so forth. It appears to me like if something like this fails, it would be awfully difficult to turn down. Somebody that requested out of that seven acres to continue the rest of that block, putting up storages. Would not look nice and highly third. Same time, the north, as I see it on the map, the north line of this property. The proposed property. Is south of the southmost townhouse on Main Street, South Main Street. The north line of this property is south of the southmost town. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it. Come on in. Next up.
Snyder, okay. I guess what you're here about.
Name for the record, I cheated. What's that? Your name for the record, please.
Uh, Dave Irwin. Yeah, you know, anyway. Uh, but I guess what you're considering is the traffic. Pass the uh up to the V Mac and so forth, some down and went over there. And going wrong, but I've done some of that kind of stuff where I used to work. And I totally thought they did a lot. And I totally thought they did a lot of the job of it. Because what they could have done is had either rented or gone to the DOT, had gotten the rubber van to go across the street. Those things can sit there a week or so, you can rent them. And find out how many cars are going. Because I live there, I've been there nine years. And, uh, that would have given you a lot better, uh, grip of what the traffic actually is. Because they not only had the students and stuff, they had, like, the president's, uh, uh, that they have all of the sports up there. And my gosh, I grew up there all the time. But those things are happening all day long, they're happening at night. And parents come, many of you probably have children. And they come to these games, and they're there the whole time. I don't care where they come from, they come from the traffic, and they come to these games. So, it, just sitting there for a day or something and looking at cars coming back, it don't matter, it matters what day they're in. Anyway, the second thing, and it's probably not on your agenda, but I don't know if you realize that that pond behind the townhome drained into this property. If you'd gone out today after four and a half inches, you brought it, had to swim across, it was that bad. I don't know what they're gonna do about that, they're gonna haul in a bunch of dirt, try to pipe underneath. But that goes underneath that street, and that is not believable, honestly. Yeah, I think the golf course has got an easy to go that way. So, anyway, there's another problem that you might have to consider, that's gonna take a while. And I also want you to know that they could have done a better job, they're accessible to try.
Yes. Yes, sir. All right. It's getting late, I don't wanna belabor this any longer, but I wanna congratulate you on a beautiful presentation. Just gorgeous, really was. I don't think this is about traffic, I mean, realistically, we have a brush minute in Boone. Realistically, I think it's all about location. And with all due respect, the city, I thought, had a broken plan, a master plan. Am I wrong? How does this fit into the city's master plan? And before you can make a decision, as my representatives, you need to make that comparison. Evaluate how this really works with the master plan. If the master plan has to get changed, revise it. Or you say, oh, with the help, let's go with something newly bought. And I look at this and say, look at the growth that we've seen as five years in that area. Not only the retail work, but the residential work. And what kind of resident, what we see there. I know it would be a comfort to have a few control cars, parks. But what end? And why would we need that in this community, in this area? I asked the chief that. It'd be nice, but I look at this and say, I, I think we're really, to use Eldon's words, putting a car for the force. Because it'd be nice to invite people in town, but where are they gonna work? Walmart. Well, they could already, people who are already at Walmart, but they're already living somewhere. So I'm asking this, council. Before you make a decision, please go back, solve the master plan, and evaluate how you want the city to grow. Please, don't make a snap decision, evaluating how you want the city to grow. With all due respect to people who built those homes down around the golf course. They need a best. With all due respect, this company wants to make a best in our community, to have to evaluate. This is the time investment we want.
Better reputation overall.
You have the public comments. I believe, council. The only concern I have, having had a desperate death out there only, is how do we the central location, what property factors? So how do we assure that we have kids and adults walking to and from Fairway and Walmart, Casey's, McDonald's, Governor General, Cumberdale? How do we ensure they're safe? We, we had no choice but to install sidewalks, everyone. And we force the property owners to do that, which we can, I guess, right? Can we do that on agricultural land?
I certainly wouldn't think so.
So, with that said, are we willing to take on that now? Because it won't be a bad. I mean, there, there's across the couple thousand feet of sidewalk that we're moving. And a lot of that, some of that property in the city. It did want to pass there. Do you speak to the point of the plan and zoning?
Sure, I, I mean, they kind of touched on it on the process, they, they started back. It's a separate plan. Initially, it would be then, uh, session on AC, that's traffic. What they decided to take issue and request. It just brought it back, uh, last, uh, day in and night out. Um, that's like the session, it doesn't, in our, our city, so we can hear that plan. Um, they did approve the whole, that plan, right now. Uh, possibly, you know, that, that kind of thing, you know, there, it would add a couple stops, I had to talk that. Well, um, it is a lot of patients that submitted, with a request for ours. That does not get. The discussion that E and D went back, why they talked a little bit about. Finally, it came down to, oh, I'm sorry, I can't. Finally, it came down to, uh, E and Z, uh, making a motion for them to, the zoning application. One part from C one, R three, C one, C two.
Uh, just to clarify your information, did the P and G committee actually bring input, recognition when they ended it from our agency?
Was it, I mean, we talked about it before.
Thank you.
So, but rural housing is, well, housing everywhere is a liberal state, rural housing. Really hard to come by in these rates, like, they're very good for very high-quality apartments, a lot of square footage. And especially quality, multi-residential units, rural areas is something that is very, very hard to come by. When I think about people living in these units, I'm thinking about families that are starting out, they're gonna spend the rest of their lives here in Boone. They've got, you know, maybe just a high school degree, they're gonna go to DMAC to get a two-year degree, to get, you know, university degree. They're gonna have kids in our schools, they're gonna, you know, patronize Walmart, they're gonna patronize Fairway, they're gonna be part of our community. And I wrote camps, uh, turn, turn aside a, a twelve million dollar investment in our community that will generate a half a million dollars over a decade of progress, that's what I mean. But they're making rural things, and we're gonna have to, at the long way, we're gonna have to do our best to address those concerns as, as soon as possible, and as quickly as possible. So, that's my thought.
What are my, uh, decision-making is, your comment that for two and a half years, you have worked at trying to, uh, find a buyer for that and develop that, and, and has not had any offers. And so I think, I don't think this is an opportunity now that, that maybe isn't.
Pretty good decision there, so. Well, I, I still have safety concerns, we can't address them. We can't decide if we're gonna put in two thousand for the sidewalk, crosswalks. Stops on things, and whatever we need to do to make it safe. But the first time a child gets run over by a car up there, we're all gonna be on the line. I'm just saying, so we, we have to make a decision, and a commitment, if we vote this through, we have to also vote though that we are making a commitment to make it as safe as possible, like you. And if that comes with a cost.
Oh, I didn't align. Sorry. Are you good, can you hear me?
Yeah.
All right. Um, as I believe I mentioned in the presentation, overall property group is aware of that, so. We are willing to, again, without asking for any dedicated funds to build the sidewalks. Now, does it cover all the, we don't know what you mentioned there? That's something that I certainly wouldn't want this twelve million dollar opportunity to go away. Remember, this isn't something we a hundred percent control that allocation. Once IFA allocates the next credit, we have a certain amount of time to be there to step into it, or it goes back. Every year, all that allocation and application plans change. That does not assure us that it'll only come back post this. Uh, so I would hate to think that a few hundred feet, thousand feet, a sidewalk, a couple stop signs, will stop us off. I, I would hate to see that. And overall, property group is willing to, without asking, again, uh, as John mentioned, if the spend passed it, that's, that's fine, good for them, we get it. But if the city is willing to grant tax evasion, that's a thing that allowing us to come in and help with sidewalk extensions, without asking you for money, is a poor option. In fact, I think that's developed pretty good on those.
No, and I understand that, but I just wanted this council to understand that there are costs involved, and there are responsibilities that we have for public safety regarding this project. I just want, wanted that to be clear, that if we make this commitment, we also commit to public safety and the people as well.
And my commitment to you and to this council is that we will be there to help. Again, we're not gonna figure out today what that is, uh, but we believe in this enough that we would want that. It's not just for the surrounding ones, it's for our residents also. And if it saves a life, it was money mostly.
Thank you.
Terry just clarified for me, I was just listening to no cost to the city, and then with the whole sidewalk lights, there will be, there can very well be costs to the city and the taxpayers. So that's, you just clarify that, so thank you.
What that amount is, I can't.
I understand.
Tell you, um, based on the partnership that we would add with them, I, I can't.
But the bottom line is, they're, they're.
They're, they're, they're just willing to get cost.
Yeah.
Absolutely. But as with any bond.
And councilman, would you agree that that problem exists whether we're here? Our fourteen days or our power increase isn't making the problem go away. It's not adding that much to it. But I think that problem is probably something that we can't solve fully, but with this development, we can certainly add a little bit in terms of the cost.
Yes. Real quick, I just, yeah, like I said, this is very close to me, just whatever, Z, obviously, we've got, play with twenty-nine, thirty, actually, thirty, but thirty, uh, people that have signed a petition, uh, whether I had it or against it, most of all, which are residents right there. Uh, obviously, we're talking about the, the danger area, the government, you know, I actually had, had a player get an accident with pedestrian. Okay, so I got things to deal with that as it comes, right? So, and obviously, we had a young person that was walking up to get a pot, I'm really the company, so we have that issue, those issues as well. But the other piece is, you know, all these businesses that you have, your own telephones, you have banks there, you just have a dentist's office. They built those with the understanding that that was a commercial. But I have a hard time looking at those people to have their investment in the property, and saying, oh, by the way, it's gonna go. So, that's what I suppose to do. Thank you.
Uh, E one, what is E one? E one, no. See, the P and G committee, he's saying, on the agenda. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, council, correct. E one is one with E one. E one, correct, okay. I'm gonna make a motion to not, during the request. Thank you. Second. Call roll.
Phil Pepper?
Yeah.
William?
If you vote yes.
I was gonna say, I.
Yes, I agree with Councilman Ray not to reason for his.
The yes means that.
Yeah, yes, is you're agreeing to his motion.
Ray?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Again?
Yes.
Sign?
No.
Warren?
Yes.
Hey, next up on the agenda is this year two thousand twenty-three human services grant recommendations, uh, Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, I promised to be brief here, and I promise that we have all good news. Um, so, in our meeting, we saw that the projected revenues that we use for in resources grants were a total five percent under Oklahoma heat sales tax for the upcoming year, uh, increased from fifty-eight thousand dollars to seventy thousand dollars. Uh, for reference, back in two thousand twenty-fourteen, we started out with fifty-one thousand dollars. So, over the years, it increased very, very slightly, but we saw this, uh, quite large jump in the expected Oklahoma sales tax revenue that we're able to award to these, uh, human services agencies. Um, we have a number of applications, a little bit fewer than we have that had in other years. For example, Salvation Army did not apply again this year, they're having some shifting between partners and things like that. We're gonna try to make sure or reach out to them, grant the application, various openings, so they can get that in. Um, so the really great news is for the applicants that, uh, were uh, sort of, over the years, tending towards what they normally get for requests, kept their asks very, very low. And, uh, we were able to award them more than what they had asked for in order to use the full amount that was allotted to us. And we stipulated that they use that same, that amount towards the, uh, items that they had in their application. items that they had in their application. And let them know that in subsequent years, we are likely to see the same amount of revenues from Oklahoma sales tax. But one exception to that was Kura, who had just recently started applying to this program, had some very, very large asks over the years. You know, their ask was almost three times the amount of the next largest one. So we did not give them their full amount, but we did give them by far the largest allocation. So the committee was all in agreement about that. And I would take any questions.
Need a motion to approve that.
One second.
Okay, follow roll.
Williamson? Yes. Ray?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Again?
Yes.
Sign?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Phil Piper?
Yes.
Next up, update Nineteenth Green, Chris.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to talk to you guys, you know, I was disappointed everybody left because I have exciting news. Our new attraction has come in town. I'm not sure if you guys heard or not, but Grail Explorers will be here. They, I think, will be launching their date here soon as well as, as well as their grand opening. So I'm excited about that. Excited to work. I know that's coming up later as well, but from the tourism standpoint, how exciting. We got another great attraction that we get to go south on this winter and, yeah, the rest of this year that you can't do anywhere else in the Midwest. So I'm super excited about that. Nineteenth Green has gone well. If you guys have been down there, and I know the majority of you have, thank you for those that have come and supported the event. It's been awesome. We had hundreds of community members that have come out and it's just been an amazing event. We did have a couple concerns. So I meant cheap, we pulled in cheap items down last week to talk about moving our actual barricades in a little bit, which will open some parking for some of our businesses that are still open on the evenings of Friday night. So with their consent, we're going to move forward and move the barricades and go on forward, start new stuff. So anyway, if you haven't been down there, come down and enjoy the fun and entertainment. It's something you never want. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, number four, board standing committee is the Austin administration DJ. Public safety season, two resolutions to be made, which is over, last public safety meeting, but pretty quickly. So, yeah, the question, please, about the one we've already made. First one is request from the line energy to renew the traffic street lighting, northeast, northeast corner of Western State Street. Not seen issues yet, so there's no issue here. Follow roll.
Ray?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Again?
Yes.
Sign?
Yes.
Phil Piper?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Okay, the next one is a resolution. This will replace the existing dedicated wood pole located at the pole number that they're having on. He, he has six. There've been a year there in the past, right, we are, and the year has been stolen, so it's just going to be a great lookout. Actually, I think we can save this one, right? Okay, so a motion to approve that.
Excellent. Bert?
Yes.
Again?
Yes.
Sign?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Piper?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
And then, so, grab me, Wednesday, eight, the fourth, third, and your two. I'd love to also maybe Terry.
No report here. By number five, department, of course, both official heads. Thank you, Your Honor. As Chris mentioned, we, we got a group coming in now with a party, kind of a group, I don't trust. That's on that, but seeing value to use their land and their tracks. And just look at the equation and packet, what these are, co-parks that are put on the rails. And you can rent them to write your tracks or the name wheels. Yeah. This company is out of, around the northeast. They have been agreements with other places around the country, maybe in that area. I think that's the situation of one, or you're right. They're excited about being moved. They did call, without them, Bill and I talked to them last fall. And they called me again that week, so about getting what they've set up over there, their temporary buildings, one day, a building was basically IFO decided, like they're on site, rescued their, you know, building, their equipment. They're asking to put in a lot apartment lot, which will be owned by them, and it will only be used easily by them. I'm a little concerned with the word that says for commercial, as the part service, like a little bit, probably if the light comes out, the company, it's, 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 you know, what about now?
And actually, and I thought that we don't have the issue with the council's tip, but we wanted to be able to crack this. Definitely. I want to say, I think there have been a lot of us, a lot of people working with it, and I think it's a real tough thing. And I think, at the time of year, we do, I don't see issues. I, I think this is a very. I think this will be the only one in the Midwest, correct, Chris?
Right, yeah, it's, it's close to this one. Vegas or, I think, Rhode Island.
So. You know, I think that is, it has the authority to make the decision at the end of the official. We just wanted to give it up to the.
I think that's a very good idea. Thank you. Thank you.
Finance officer, I heard it.
My, since we said we said it first, I'm scared for my office, her last April, Friday. My previous subject is for works for the school personally, and have the summer off, so I kind of like to, that I filled this position as a temporary position, not by time to get that position built, but hopefully the, right. I'm not sure what the question is then.
Thank you. City fair, you have a report, Director of Public Works, Jar House.
First off, I guess I'm pleased to report that our cloud truck, dump truck that we ordered two years ago has been delivered. That's where the bodybuilder is. They have all the parts, I'm sure that they have all of our apparatuses put on it. It should be received at probably within two, three months. Today, citywide, you know, picked it up when it was wet, heavy, and seventeen and sorry, for average for years. A little breakdown, we got back out in cold rain. Then, I mean, mosquito spraying, it's to be. The calibrating machine, nobody in this area has been calibrated yet, in terms of a mile, hopefully this speed gets, and hopefully by Thursday, as long as weather permit, temperatures above seventy degrees, the larva, mosquitoes have to be active at seventy degrees, or the, you know, we're looking, sorry, bye.
You started, of course, I was three years. Okay, we have any other engineering, city, council, open saving chief hours?
Yes, Your Honor, on the agenda tonight is fire station addition. We received three bids. Those bids were well over our budgeted amounts, and so I would look for an emotion to reject all bids. That's it. Just one quick reminder, this is the last week for open burning that you guys sat at the last, so through the twelfth. Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, we have some plans moving forward to work with, to try to come up with another plan to, yep, tweak on it. Yep.
Chief Google, no, for now. City, no. Thank you, sir. Up on the screen there, for seven, this is the house that we identified as a demo. The owners would like to deed that to us for the money, obviously, and we'll demo it, but it's also, basically, what I take is, it's a good training spot for Justin and Star Department, the new control burn on house. And we'll obviously move asbestos, move the demo. Good thing about the, this is a good building, so I, I certainly think that once all the training is over and that lot is flat of grass, we're going to go. It's a wonderful contract to give them now. So I ask for approval.
Sir?
Follow roll.
Ray?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Phil Piper?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Again?
Yes.
The only other thing, I just reminded the ED committee that we still have a meeting at five thirty-three. At the next meeting. Sorry. All right, number six, consent agenda. Very item of consent agenda that you'd like to move and discuss separately, not in the motion to approve.
I would actually like to remove D four to discuss.
D four, right. Let me motion go through the existing consent agenda and we'll discuss that. So, follow roll.
Warren?
Yes.
Phil Piper?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Again?
Yes.
Sign?
Yes.
Good. We'll discuss our resolution, number four. Go ahead.
All right. So I, I guess I'm gonna get right, so. I own the diversity council and science for proposing this resolution and supporting the LGBT community. Last year, in this chamber of the president, we had a ton of kind choices, kind of price play and vandalizing it along with the kind notes. Though this is something that I myself did not appreciate as a member of the LGBT community, I feel that police in the city handled the situation very well, unexpectedly. There will always be people who support us, and there will always be people who need more education about the LGBT community. Though, from what I observed, the city has always taken these things seriously and resolved them, or resolved these problems, and it's kind of mattered. I personally, well, so in the world, becoming out as gay is all my thing, and people like me, who live normal, everyday lives, without feeling different for single hours. However, with this resolution, I do feel as if this singles out the LGBT community even more so. I have called around Boom and spoke to fellow members of the LGBT community about this resolution, and they consensus is that they felt the same way. I understand, Council and Science, this is most likely not your role in the post. Council, we as LGBT community recommend that if a resolution like this would go through, we would rather say that every person in Boom has equal rights and opportunities, not just the LGBT community, as Boom is on community families, and we should all feel as if we can go on and give them. Thank you.
Okay, well, so, but, first of all, I want to make, I'll be Phil Piper for you, candor, and I would hope that this council will always be receptive to everybody, including the LGBT LGBTQ community. I did, when Council and Science said that out, the updated version of this prior resolution, I did, I could support that. I did not support the first one, that's why we ended it, because we then also gave another offer at the time. I thought the first one was just not really right for the community. And that's why we offered another solution. But in light of Cole's comments tonight, I think, you know, other than all of them, and you know, we all have people we know, family members, extended family members, grandparents of the gate. I have family members that are, that are black, that are Iranian, that are Jewish, Christian, whatever, in extended family. And I think when we start talking about inclusion and diversity, that's a big thing. It's a big thing that we hear about all the time. But I'm beginning to wonder, as a society, if it's finally time that perhaps instead of always labeling everything and wanting to talk about it, we should all just decide that we really don't care what you are, as long as you're a good citizen, and you're a good person, and you mean well, and you like being a part of your community in one way or another. Perhaps that's really the start to diversity. So I think what Cole just said in his statement was a sign of true leadership. Cole, and I commend you for that. And so on that basis, I would go on with what Cole has just stated.
I feel the same way, I think. I think that will be my last. I agree.
Very well said.
Yeah.
Do we need to revise this, or?
I think Cole's saying that we don't even need to address this.
That's a little bit, I mean, it just singles out.
From what I gathered, it's either kind of an all or nothing kind of a thing. I mean, we want to add something like this unless everyone puts it in a boom. If, I mean, not something that we even want to do, then I just say, like, it's an all or nothing.
I mean, it's not necessary yet, but.
That's how I'd agree with you. Basically saying it's not necessary to even address it.
Do you have a motion to?
We need a motion table that.
Denied. Denied. One more motion denied. Follow roll.
Phil Piper?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Again?
Yes.
Sign?
Warren? Yes.
Okay. All right. Number seven, ordinance, A, second reading ordinance twenty-two seventy-eight, allow the city to change the protection ordinance. So move the second, follow roll.
Williamson?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Again?
Yes.
Sign?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Phil Piper?
And B, first reading ordinance twenty-two seventy-nine, allow the city of Boom to change the parking regulations on First Street and Boats Street to Green Street. From a, second, follow roll.
Ray?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Again?
Yes.
Sign?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Phil Piper?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Number eight, I have ex, the council made, which is supposed to be on the Florida, I asked to move it to twenty-first. I, just for adjusted raises, we need to move the July fourteenth to July fifth, so we're gonna move two meetings. So it's gonna be the twenty-first, and then it'll be July fifth. Yes, sir. That's just intervention. Okay. All right, we're.
Let's say June twenty-first and July.
Good, and, yeah, the council comments, I do, just, I just want to thank everybody. Green space was great. I had the kids up there, enjoying it, and around, a bit of in the chalk and bubbles and all that. So thank you for going to the city. So great job. One of the things about the green space, and I'm so pleased that it doesn't look like there's a lot of community participation, and I think that's what we just like.
Yep.
And I think that just says a lot.
Yeah, I was able to go to the first one for a bit. I was out of time for the second one, but I did get constituent comments that they're very happy and they love their family there, so, 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 so. By the way, they held out for you, especially the second.
Any other council comments?
Any public comments? I just thought I'd. Now I need a motion to go into closed session. Pursuant to I code session twenty-one point five B, just that strategy, council, litigation is evident. Or closing, we'd like to register for this man to be pushed to the city of Boone that. Granted. So. The second, call roll.
Bert?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Si?
Yeah.
Warren?
Yes.
Phil Piper?
Yeah.
Boy Anton?
Yes.
Boy Anton?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.